I would like to call to order this work session in the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is a civics academy and we have our communication manager, Stephanie Fleischer, here to present on it. Or give us an update, not really present, but have a little chit chat with us.
Great. Um, so yeah, like you said, this is, we're having a work session today for the Forest Grove Civic, Civics Academy. Next slide. Um, first, I want to extend my thanks to Joyce Phillips and Bob Abbey from the library for their contributions and support in helping plan this. They really had a lot of really good, it was very appreciated. Next slide. Um, so this is where it started. So civics academy accomplishes city council goal 2.4. Um, before our brainstorming sessions, a short survey was created to provide some guiding information to put this together. Um, of course, we have mentioned we partnered with the library and Joyce, Bob and myself had two brainstorming sessions. Next slide. So when asked what subject you are most interested in, the leading response so far has been community development. Um, the survey remains open, it'll remain open till probably about June 20th. So we're still expecting a few, a few more responses. Um, but current, current results suggest a strong, consistent interest in this topic. And just based on the community engagement that we've had with the 2040, with just being at the farmer's market and talking to people, um, I do not think this will, I think community development will remain hot, if not the first part. Uh, next slide. Um, when asked about their preferred time commitment, most respondents indicated that a six week duration is ideal. Um, during our brainstorming sessions, uh, we explored the possibility of extending the program, um, based on feedback or and staff time as we go through. Um, and next slide. Um, when asked about the preferred time of year for the program, uh, fall emerged as the leading choice among respondents. Um, it's also worth noting that the fall does not compete with the police community academy. So there won't be any conflict. Uh, the additional survey questions, those were optional, um, but several, several respondents shared comments highlighting their interests. Uh, these included just gaining a general knowledge about all aspects of city operations, um, understanding the city budgeting process and how funds are allocated, uh, learning about preservation of historic areas, of course, continued interest in community development. Um, and additionally, survey participants were invited to provide an email address to receive updates, like when applications live and so forth. Um, 17 people who have taken this, um, have left their email. So we're looking, we're considering that, that's a full. Uh, next. So during our brainstorming sessions, uh, we discussed the application process, providing a takeaway handout summarizing the key information covered, along with contact details for the relevant department, uh, scheduling. And again, we're aiming for six weeks this fall, based on the survey results. Um, and we'd also like to switch locations, meaning some, some sessions, uh, will be held at the community auditorium, others in the Rogers Room, depending on availability. But for others, like example, light and power could be held at their business. Cause how else are you gonna learn about light and power? You're not there. The next slide. Uh, during our second brainstorming session, uh, we discussed the different types of academies that are offered. Uh, so number one is the civic leadership academy. Uh, this is a partnership with TSU Hatfield School of Government. Um, and Cornelius and Hillsborough participate in this type of program. Uh, number two is community academy, and this is strongly associated with law enforcement, police departments. So Hillsborough, Washington County Sheriff, Beaverton, Tigard, and of course, Forest Grove Police Department, they all host the community. And number three is the civics academy. Uh, so Wilsonville was, um, one of the cities that stuck to this format. And the civics academy model offers participants the opportunity to learn about the city's programs and operations, meet city staff, get to know fellow community members, and based on community interactions, again, for over the past two years, as long as I've been here, um, I believe this model will best serve the community. They offer really good information and behind the scenes. Uh, next. And these are the consensus items. So, you know, what model of academy, we opening it to residents, um, business owners, the application process, anything, any other questions you may have?
Okay, so let's, um, let's start going through these bullet points. So is there a consensus on the civics academy type model?
Yes.
I'm saying yes. And then must be a resident of Forest Grove, if space available, open to local business owners. How do you guys feel about that?
I recommend consistency with their board's commission policy as well. Cause we, we did make that change on that where.
So it could be must be resident of Forest Grove or on a boarding commission of the city?
No, just the same eligibility.
A little bit, I mean, I think if they're on the, if they're on the Forest Grove, like boarding commission and they're working towards, but if we just say it can be outside of Forest Grove, then you could have people from Beaverton. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I mean, I guess, I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, but I'm just wondering. Yeah.
Was the survey specific to Forest Grove and not outside of Forest Grove? The survey that was done, was it just?
It was open to everybody.
Okay.
It primarily went out to people who follow our social media.
I mean, truthfully, I think probably it would be mostly community members within the Forest Grove, but it was open.
Yeah. Counselor Martinez, did you wanna say something?
I think it should be more local.
I think it's kind of like our feet. I'm just gonna spit it out that way. So like, we have an in city, because basically we're using staff resources, which equates to taxpayer dollars to put this on. And so it's for the benefit of the people who pay into that. Whereas the difference I see with boards and commission is that's like a volunteer group of like advising the city that has an interest. And we also can say if we don't like yes or no, right? Like there's these checks and balances through the interview process. Whereas this would be pretty much, I mean, open. And I think too, like, I guess my further question would be, if you get the maximum of 20, how are you going to decide between those 20 applicant? Like what if you had 25 people apply? Is that gonna be first come, first served or?
So one of the things that we discussed, again, during the brainstorming sessions is, um, asking people if they're able, how many sessions they're able to attend, because we really want people to get the most out of this. So if we open it up and maybe some, maybe two of those 25 can only attend four. Well, they would kind of go to the bottom of the list. We want people that, you know, can attend the majority, which would be, which would be five. You know, or, and then maybe from there, just date.
Sorry, I kind of detoured off that second bullet point. So I heard a couple say they would like residents of Forest Grove. I heard one say open to anybody.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there an age restriction, like 18 or older or?
So we really would like to keep it 18 and older. We did discuss maybe having it, um, maybe adjusting the program a little bit for youth and again, partnering with the library for that. But let's get through at least one or two sessions first and then find ways to, um, alter it to fit different audiences.
So there's no, uh, uh, age, I mean, there is. So that should be made very clear. Sure, that should be made, made very clear when this goes out to be advertised. Otherwise you could have youth, you know, uh, from the high school that might be interested. And we also need to remember when the time comes, many of these youth attend, are living Cornelius and they attend Forest Grove High School. So, you know, these are things that, uh, we need to take into account when it's made available for youth.
Okay. Counselor Schimmel?
Just to clarify, my, my recommendation was consistency with the, the boards and commissions policy, which I believe included two from outside the city. So it wasn't open ended. And for a couple of other examples, as business owners, property owners who pay taxes here that live outside.
Yeah, I believe we had talked about the school district. We, or consider the zip codes. We, we discussed.
Yeah, but we then, we, yeah, but then we changed it to outside. So for this recommendation is, is saying open to local business owners. That would be outside. And again, I would say that like, I guess you would use the same model for the two outside. But I, for me, I'm just not, at the first go around of like not knowing how many people, I think that this, um, recommendation of must be a resident of Forest Grove. And if there's additional space and someone who's outside but owns a business and does pay tax, like I'm, I'm okay with this bullet point.
Right, yeah.
One, one question I have. Um, could they be within the 97116? I mean, part of Forest Grove, because we have a lot of outlawing residents who are part of Forest Grove that I feel should be included.
I don't know, I think, what do you, what was your thought process?
I mean, I guess I didn't really have a preference. Um, I know that, like, like was stated, some of our boards and commissions, they allow like out to the school district. Um, I, I hesitated to do that because I think the common misconception that the city and the school district are the same. Um, but again, if they're taking the civics academy, that's something that we would tell them, so.
Counselor Phil?
I kind of agree with you that this is a little bit different than an advisory board or commission, because this is actually a service. And so I think, you know, the delineation even, even for folks who still are in the 97116 zip code for me is that, you know, we, the city isn't providing services to those. And I think, and so they're not paying for those.
Or they don't pay for like electricity or any of that kind of stuff?
Not, they don't pay towards the levy for our, or operational funding.
Oh, okay.
If they pay for like, cause there's some like out in Verbor area that like, would be, uh, like maybe have light and power, but that's like their light and power bill that they're, take the levy.
All right, well, then I understand that, so.
Yeah, and that would, they would be paying for that, right? Like sure.
They're just saying that one.
Sure.
Yeah.
Is there consensus for this one or? I'm hearing consensus, I think. I'm seeing three head nods here. So. And then complete the application process and agree to a waiver. What's, why do they need that? What's the waiver for?
So general topics on the waiver is just, cause we're going to provide like, like refunds. Do you have any dietary restrictions? Like we'll do our best to accommodate if somebody, something along those lines. Um, again, are you available to attend five of the six sessions? Um, it also says that, you know, during some sessions, uh, you may be sitting or standing? Do you require extra accommodations? We are still working on proper wording for this, but reminding people that this is a way for respectful discourse with city staff. Um, and it's paramount to retain the civics academy intention, which is the foundational local government thing. Um, so it's not, we, a nice way to say it's not a public forum. We desperately want you to come in and learn from us, but.
So it's kind of like a contract really?
Yeah.
Not really a waiver, waiver, you give something up, you know, like.
Yeah, it's an agreement.
Yeah, yeah, an agreement, probably.
Any discussion on this item? Yeah, I think we are saying it looks good.
I just had a, how long does the, um, farmer's market last? I can't recall.
The middle of October.
September, okay.
Beginning of October, October.
Okay, but I think that's the only thing that may be a reoccurring conflict.
I do think at that point in the year, like people can go before or still make it for the hour, like close that eight, right? The farmer's market?
That's it.
When?
Oh yeah, the farmer's market closes at eight.
Oh, at eight.
But I think you, I mean, it's an hour and a half, like, I think there's time to go before or after. It brings people down, you know, people will go. Uh, is that okay, is Wednesdays in the fall from 5:37? I mean, it really is like, to me, it's like more about city staff, uh, because you all are gonna be like, I might show up for one session or could you ask me to do something? But for me, the time is really most important about you and city staff.
That's the only time all three of us had.
Okay. So I, I mean, I think we.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then hosted different locations, I think that's cool. I think like people love the electric.
Yeah.
And it breaks up them and, and then like, that's also how you see more, you could even use like the pool, the break room at the pool.
Yeah, and they would definitely know where we're going to be ample time to know where we're going to be at each step. So it's not as.
Yeah, cool. And city council recognition ceremony to be, what's T?
Oh, oops, that meant to be TBD.
Okay, I thought it was supposed to be to be determined. I was like, well, I'm really old, so like sometimes I don't know.
Yeah.
I was just like, okay, what's that?
I think new thing.
Yeah, I think they should totally do.
The next scheduled meeting after the last session was the 27th, but that's scheduling that is.
I think this, I think a recognition ceremony. I'm real excited about this. Any other questions or discussions about this?
I have a really quick, about the, one thing that I know that I didn't know until I started becoming involved, that local city stuff is, um, the restrictions on cities' ability to raise. And so part of that budget discussion, I'm hoping that you're gonna touch on restrictions and including measures 550 and how property taxes work and, okay, cool.
Yeah. Agreed.
No, I mean, I guess that's another question I have. Thanks for asking that question is, you know, when a lot of our email, is there like a data dashboard that's like, we get the most comments about why is this going in this location? And how can we start like, so if we, if we have like data on, I guess it's like our data of our communications gonna drive topics a little bit, so then?
Yes.
That'll be so amazing.
We're gonna like, I guess my hope is to give them, hey, this is what planning happens, and this is what is qualified to go in that space and all of that kind of fact. Don't, a lot of people know that. And if I did not work for a local government, not.
Right. Okay, wait, I think, yeah, I saw his name first, I knew. Schimmel and then Phil.
Well, maybe for a future version with a Spanish language academy, working with our local partners.
Oh yeah. Um, again, like, I think I had it, it is in my notes. Um, so yeah, open to, um, creating a Spanish language version. I mean, we have Adelante here, Centro here. We wanna get through it at least twice first to work out the kinks, but I think that there's definitely room to.
I think it'd be especially interesting if, if there was a council simulation where they were given an agenda and important decisions.
So we did think about that too, and I think it's interesting that you bring that up because the, um, the TSU version of the civics leadership academy, um, if this does end up going well, then maybe we can adopt that model as kind of like a civics academy 2.0, because in that, uh, program, they're actually given, um, a community issue to solve and then they present their results to council and that's led by the Hatfield School. That's like, yeah, and that's pretty cool too. But I think having that, again, having that foundation is something really important.
Your question just made me think, um, wonder if we would be able to, and you know, when we're advertising this program and re, and seeking applications, um, you know, we, we have whole email lists, long list of people who are very interested in what we do here at council, uh, if we would invite those people to fill.
Those people may or may not be beyond that. Right. People have already provided their contact information. Perfect.
So exciting. Any other question? Well, thank you, Stephanie. I'm very excited, looking forward to it.
Yeah, same.
Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this work session in the Forest Grove City Council. We will reconvene in seven minutes at seven o'clock. Call to order this work session in the Forest Grove City Council. Uh, city manager performance evaluation form and process review, and I'm gonna turn it over to our HR director, Ms. Brenda Camilli.
Good evening, everyone. Finally, we have some beautiful weather out there, so go out here as soon as possible. I'm currently, the process for evaluating the city manager's performance has been to start in February or March and look at the criteria, have the council review the criteria the evaluation will be based on and adopt that sometime in April or May for the evaluation that ends, the period that ends on June 30th. On February 10th, we had a work session to do that, look at the criteria for the current year's evaluation for the city manager, um, for the performance of the period ending June 30th. And council voiced an opinion that they would like to look at doing a more forward looking process where we establish the criteria for the evaluation of the city manager prior to that review period beginning, so prior to July 1st. The purpose of this work session is to provide the council an opportunity for us to do that, um, for you to look at the criteria, if you want to change it, if you wanna talk about something else in the process, that we can do that ahead of time, so it can be adopted by council prior to June 30th. And therefore the council and the city manager will be aware of what evaluation criteria is gonna be used for the upcoming year, instead of doing it partially or most of the way through the evaluation period. So also, um, staff is here to lend any assistance that we can and for, if the council wants to provide direction on any other steps that you want to take or look at, or how you wanna revise, um, the process. And you saw in the memo, I also included our current, um, evaluation form for the, that the council completes for the city manager and also the self-evaluation form as a sort of like. So with that, I think I'd turn it over to council for the discussion.
Okay, so let's, do we wanna look at the current criteria form the council's use? Can we look? That's the, can we look at the one? Or do I just wanna look at the self-evaluation, the same managers first? That's the one on the screen and then ours on the other side. Were there any comments, you know, were there any comments about the evaluation process that you would like change or use that or maybe redone that? Go ahead, Counselor Schimmel.
Well, the, I guess gen, well, thank you, Brenda, for, for bringing this to us. And, and I read in a staff memo, you incorporated a, a feedback back loop process, so thanks for that. That's, that, that was one of the components I hope that we would, would add in the, in the next period. Um, but generally, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, you know, more clear, measurable, timely feedback loop as, as well as, uh, you know, for particularly to, so that we're raising any issues that have been consistent or egregious enough that, that we need, that needs immediate response and also to give our city manager an opportunity to, to address those in a more timely manner, so that at the end of the year, we're reflecting on that as part of the, the review. Um, you know, I'm also interested in, I guess for, for us, uh, having some guiding principles that, that guide the, the feedback we provide and any checks and balances that we're willing to ask each other, just to ensure that there, any feedback we provide is consistent with what we set out to do as a council in terms of goals and objectives or our, our decisions. Uh, and then the evaluation form itself, you know, I sent, uh, my colleagues just a sample of what kind of language to consider and, and I, I personally find the, the current language to be a little bit generic and vague. I, I would be in support of language that was more consistent with our goals, objectives, and then particularly in light of, uh, the 2040 vision, you know, that, that gives us, you know, in terms of leadership, we're looking to our city manager to set direction for seeing that vision through. And I, I hope that our evaluation of, of our city manager would reflect that in terms of how we're measuring that, that progress in that horizon, as well as the incremental year by year. But that, that was the, some of the context to, um, some of the input I provided on the city council input form itself.
When did you send us that? Did you send us something?
Monday, Monday, yeah.
I don't remember seeing it. And I'm going through. Oh.
Anyone else?
It was connected.
I got it.
Yeah.
It was what?
Recommend, no.
The 25th? Sounds right.
I think I just got.
Sunday, it was Sunday.
Why did I not see it or get it? I still don't see it. Yeah, like to be honest, obviously I have not, oh, here, I just didn't, I just missed it. So I have not looked at the. The comment shit. All right.
When do we, when we formally approve of a form? Is it the next meeting in June or?
Well, we have like some flexibility in the agenda, but it would have to be based on the consensus that that February work session would have to be June 9th or June, whatever, two weeks is from that, the 23rd. 23rd.
And it doesn't have to be adopted by the end of June. I think the idea is to have it in place, or at least I don't think it has to be, have it in place as early as possible, so that it's looking toward the next year as.
Well, this, this is absolutely critical enough for me to get it right. I, I would not wanna rush it. So I assume being a work session, this is our opportunity to introduce an idea and then.
Yeah.
Over the course of the next month or two.
Well, can you tell me specifically, like what are you introducing? Like what, what language change are you introducing? Is it what's in blue or?
Yeah, what's in blue. And, and it's just a, a sample to, I'm, I'm trying to reflect on your goals and objectives as well as a 24, 2024 vision to give us something more tangible, measurable or identifiable to measure or assess that performance as opposed to just generically evaluating it based on, I guess.
Yeah.
Subjective words.
I, yeah, and I think that. I see, I'm like, I've only read the first one, but like, these are, I think what you have in yours are like the examples of how public, how that criteria looks, right? Like it doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, I'm just wondering like, uh, like resident participation metrics, like that could be one way. Right, it doesn't, but like, we're not, we're not assessing the city manager on tracking that. Like do it, I mean, do we, I guess I'm concerned that we, they're like, I view what your comments are as examples of indicators and not how we're gonna evaluate those and, or that, that position.
Well, that.
That's what I'm kinda con.
Uh, well, I understand you, you just saw this, I.
Right.
Well, I, I guess that my rationale is that this is a step further than, I mean, what you, what you just said about what I said, I would say about the original, cause you, what is there here to measure against? In terms of the criteria we put, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we, that we get that, get so explicit that, that it's not asking for our.
Right.
Observations, you know, cause someone can measure a result, but, but, but these are still, what I'm trying to get to is the relationship to the things that we said are important in terms of our goals and objectives and the 2040 vision. That's the, an attempt to get closer to that, so that when, when we're observing the city manager, we're observing the things that we ask them to do. And there's a, and we're just putting categorizing it by this, this topic area of how is he doing it relative of a service, the leadership? So I'm not, I'm not, uh, you know, beholden to any, any of the languages, just the, I, I wanna, I support a stronger relationship to the goals and objectives, so that, you know, there's a consistency with what we said, set out as a priority and what, how we're observing.
Yeah, and I think too for, that's an interesting. Yeah. Well, it's interesting because we have, I mean, there's, it's a multifaceted position, right? And so I understand, like, wanting to tie it back to goals and objectives, but we have, like, one of the evaluation categories is city goal achievement. Like, those are goals and objectives, right? And so I think, as frustrating as it can be to have pretty generic terms of, like, what this is, it also, I mean, I, I tend with policymaking to keep, like, bookends like this and so that people that look at things differently or have different perspectives can apply it how they want. Like, so there's seven, there's always going to, unless there's a charter amendment, but there's seven people that evaluate. Jesse, so I guess, like, what I'm concerned about is, like, while it's, it does seem like the language is broad, I think it's broad because then I can look at this explanation and then I can say, hey, well, I saw him attend this event and then he wrote back on this. He always answers, you know, like, I can use these, like, specific things to measure, like, based on my life as my examples for my score. I don't know if that makes sense, whereas opposed to, like, saying, like, you, like, you need to do these specific things, then, like, to me, it becomes a yes or a no, like, and if, you know, like, and so it's not really me saying, like, hey, I saw these, I don't know. That's just my, I'm pulling. Go ahead, Counselor.
I, I agree with you, Mayor, and to match them with our goals and objectives, those, those do change over time.
I'm also in agreement. I'm in agreement with your statement.
I have a little bit of a question here because I think, you know, obviously, you know, Counselor Schimmel's comments, I don't think made it into the packet for tonight. And so we're referencing things, I'm not sure that Mariah has seen them or Brenda.
Are they public comment?
They should be under public comment in the packet.
It wasn't like, when we read it this weekend, or if you're like me, if you read it this weekend, you'd see that. It was updated today.
What I can say is that these comments, this language that Counselor Schimmel added are very helpful to, to kind of question, you know, to help you reflect on what you want to say about the, you know, the evaluation and about the performance.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, for me personally, like, I'm not, and that, like, I'm going to own it because I did not see the email and then I read my packet before the public comment. Like, I haven't had enough time to read or digest the proposed changes to really have an opinion at this point. So, Counselor.
We had a recent similar incident and, and we needed time to review as well. So I think that we need to treat everything equally.
No, that, those weren't equal, Counselor. I mean, this, this, we got the agenda Friday, I submitted it Sunday. It made the packet.
Um, is anyone, I mean, or is, is there anyone that feel, like, what are we, next steps forward? Like, my, I guess, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, like, really waste your time, but like, there's, is there other things we can decide on and then put a pause on this right now? I can help, because there are other parts of the process, like the, the mid, I saw, like, a timeline, like, the mid-year. So like, maybe we can look at, or do we want to, actually, while we still have this on the screen, do we want to look at the city manager's self-evaluation? I mean, I would like to hear from Jesse, like, do you think the self-evaluation is? Like, no, what I don't want is something that takes so much time that it takes you away from your job that also, like, allows you to contextualize your experiences.
Yeah, I, I think the city manager's self-evaluation can be, can be valuable. I, I do also, you know, have to put some, um, kind of, you can put a lot of time into it if, if you really choose to. And so I kind of try to manage how much time I do put into that, if that makes sense. The intention of it, I think, is to provide some information to, to self-evaluate, to self-reflect, but then to provide some information to council about what some of the accomplishments were over the past year. And, uh, so I, I don't know, Mayor, if I have any specific comments on the self-evaluation. I'm just, I'm, I'm looking over it right now again. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Brenda, but it was shortened from what it was a few years ago. I do remember it used to take a fair amount of time. I do think this new sheet is a little more succinct, yet gives council enough information. So I don't know if that helps, Mayor.
Yeah, any comments from council on the self-evaluation? So are we okay continuing to use this one?
Yes, I don't think there's any questions that are missing, if that's what the question is, so.
Or any, like, redundant questions?
One and five might be able to be combined, but other than that, yeah, probably not, so. One and five are both project-centric questions, so you could, in theory, combine that about, what did you accomplish this past year and what are you most passionate about looking forward?
Yeah, I agree. Is that okay with? Yep, that makes sense, and I think that would be great. So do you want to, let's look at the timeline.
So the other piece in answer to your question, so there's the actual criteria that you'll be evaluating the city manager on. And then there's the process that you do adopt each year. And at this point, council reviews the city manager's performance one time, at one point in time. And so one council comment having to do with, it would be helpful to be able to check-in points throughout the year. So, and we do this with other employees too. Performance happens all the time, so if any issues come up, you can talk about them then at the time. So it's not just at the end of the year, all of a sudden, things are brought up and, and nobody knew about them. So I put just for council's review and consideration, I put in a sample kind of timeline for you to evaluate that would provide a couple of opportunities. So you have, number one is our work session today. And then potentially on, you know, June 23rd is what we kind of had penciled out for you to adopt a resolution that would provide the evaluation criteria. So we still have a little bit of time for what you're talking about tonight. And then after that, we would have a check-in point. And these dates are, like I said, they're just put out there for your consideration. In October, the city manager and councilors could meet to discuss the quarterly process, progress on goals and best performance. So that would be nothing in writing, probably, just discussion. I mean, there could be something, Ryan, that's totally up to you, but this could just be a check-in. And then executive session on February 9th potentially would be to also have a second check-in to do the same thing as we did in October. And then we start the annual evaluation process like this year. And instead of starting in March, because we'll already have been doing the check-ins, that we already have the criteria established, so we don't have to do that part, so skipping that. Then you would just have your comments due to the city attorney by May 1st for the entire evaluation period. And then everything else would go similar to how it went, famously.
How do we feel about adding the quarterly review or quarterly progress meeting? Okay. So then we just need to go back to the evaluation input. Let's try to bust this out. Let's try to figure out if we can get a direction one way or the other.
Maybe not quarterly, maybe mid-year.
Wait, thought we're going to do the quarterly, no, I'm sorry, I went back to the evaluation sheet. Okay, but we're not doing this evaluation sheet quarterly, are we? No, this is just, no, sorry. So we had decided the quarterly meetings for progress, just like a, yeah, yeah. And then I was going to go back to this evaluation form to try to get consensus on the wording for the criteria.
Is that necessary? I mean, when you say bust out, I, I don't come into a work session assuming.
Oh, sorry, that's just my language.
No, I understand, but.
I was just saying, like, at first, I'm like, I was saying at first, I thought, like, we weren't ready to discuss it. So I was going to say we should shelve it and move it on. And so when I use the term busted out tonight, it means come back to it, work on it and, and do it.
I understand exactly what you mean.
I'm not trying to be rude.
No, I, no, I didn't take it that way. And I'm, I'm saying I, I don't come into this work session assuming that, that we are finalizing this link. I mean, this is too important, the person's professional evaluations that try to finish today.
Yeah, I mean, can we have a discussion about some of the elements of this with the intention of coming to this in, in June at our work session when we're, I mean, so that we spend a little, I mean, we've, you know, got time.
Yeah, ask clarifying questions.
And then 15 minutes or so talking about these recommendations and then come back to it at the next.
I, I would like to take the dates off. I just don't think, having looked at the calendar and the budget stuff that's coming in June, the 2040 things we have, the cost recovery, I don't, I mean, I'm going to be really honest, like, I don't know when we're going to get this one. So I'm fine coming back to this, but I'm also want the council to be accepting the fact that we might not come back to it until July 4th.
Well, if, if that, that's your direction, then there's already a consensus not to change it, but.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just, I'm.
No, that's what, that's what I heard yesterday, there is a consensus not, not to change it, but I would suggest taking some time.
Yes, Counselor. Point of clarification, Counselor Schimmel, I didn't catch the last part you said.
That what I, what I understood when we were talking about this before was that, that the consensus from the, from the group here is not to change the, the form as it is.
Yeah, I mean, we, I don't know.
For the last one, is that?
The original, the one we just.
The one that we just completed.
Yeah, that's what I heard. So if, but if you're opening it up, I'm just saying, this is too important to rush changing. I think we need to take the time, otherwise just keep the original and, and I don't want to rush change, like, effectively.
I don't remember if I got, yeah, okay, so I need to clarify, is there consensus to keep? Let me just get some clarity on this. Is there consensus to use the evaluation form we used this previous year? I see a head nod from Counselor Gusterson, from Martinez, from Falconer, and from Marshall. I'm sorry.
I'm in favor.
So at this point, there's consensus to keep it for this year how it is?
Thank you for the word, Brian.
Yeah, I mean, we can always, like, I think too, like, do we have flexibility, like, during our progress? Or like, we can always look at this and we can bring that. Yeah.
This document is something that the council, actually, the evaluation criteria can be whatever the city council decides. So I believe we can change it whenever we want. Or there's just an outline in the city manager's contract that he's evaluated once a year annually. And so that requirement that you have, and then anything that's changed just needs to be addressed by the council.
All right, cool. Thank you.
I clarify, then we are going to keep this form for the 2025, 2026 evaluation period. And during the year, if anything changes, we'll talk about that with the council. And what about the timeline that was proposed?
There was consensus with the timeline.
So then that will be our plan is to send out notice to the council about executive sessions or check-ins.
Okay.
And so then you can look at the 2040 goals and talk about those at your first check.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back, for coming in. I adjourned this work session. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council at 7:02 on Tuesday, May 27th. Will our city recorder please take role or call role? Sorry, different job.
Counselor Gusterson?
Here.
Counselor President Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Falconer?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tobalatin Kalapuas who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the city council and audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Before I begin, we have proclamations next, and it's a proclamation recognizing the 250th birthday of the US Army. But before we begin, could I ask Mr. Michael and Dale Thaler to join me up here and stand? And then I want to say a couple of words. They are part of American Legion Post II. And yesterday, and for a number of years, they organize our Forest Grove Memorial Day celebration. Yesterday was an honor for me to attend. The ability to thread the needle of remembrance, of honor, of dedication, and to tell the stories of the people who sacrificed their life for our country is so valuable to our community, and I am very grateful to have you a part of it, and thank you for doing it. Thank you. Could you guys want to stay with me up here while I do this? Okay, let's do it. Whereas, the US Army will celebrate its 250th birthday on June 14th, 2025, commemorating its establishment on the date in 1775 when the Second Continental Congress passed a resolution that create a national army of six companies of expert riflemen to join forces near Boston. And whereas the US Army had a significant role in the growth and development of the United States, winning the New Republic's independence in the audacious eight-year struggle against Great Britain. And whereas since its establishment in 1775, US Army soldiers, families, and army civilians have supported our nation, bearing truth, faith, and allegiance to the country, the US Constitution, the Army, their units, and fellow team members. And whereas the Oregon National Guard, Army veterans, and their families are an integral part of our community. And whereas we recognize the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who have served in the United States Army since its inception in 1775. And whereas it is most fitting that we pause to reflect on the rich history and legacy of the Army's service, sacrifice, and dedication to our nation. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim June 14th, 2025 as the 250th birthday of the US Army in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
And we didn't have it in Spanish this time?
We unfortunately didn't have time to translate it.
Okay, because I'm sure that our veterans do remember many of their brothers that were from Puerto Rico and were from the Southwest, that were Mexican-Americans and have also fought and lost their lives for this country. So it would have been nice to have this proclamation in Spanish as well. So it would have been nice to have this proclamation in Spanish as well.
Moving on, next with our Agenda B is public comments. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Michael Pearl is first up on our public comment list.
Good evening. I'm Michael Pearl, 3254 Ridge Point Drive, Forest Grove, Oregon. As a 20-year veteran of the U.S. Army and Vietnam, I am here tonight to publicly recognize and thank our city, especially the city manager, Jesse Vanderzannen, for replacing the Purple Heart city signs that had fallen down around town. These new signs are placed at the four major entrances to our city. We veterans hold the Purple Heart in the highest esteem. The Purple Heart recognizes those who have given their lives and/or their blood for our beloved nation. Forest Grove has been a Purple Heart city since August 10, 2015, when Mayor Pete Truax, in conjunction with the Military Order of the Purple Heart, declared Forest Grove a Purple Heart city. Purple Heart Day, held each August 7, recognizes those who have earned this respected award. Earlier today, I watched the video of Mayor Truax reading that proclamation. Interesting that we had a proclamation just read by another mayor today. At that time, 22 veterans a day were taking their own lives due to PTSD. Alice Custodio, Custodio of the local Elks and the PTSD Foundation of America were present at that proclamation reading to encourage our city to care for its veterans. As of today, we have approximately 1,600 veterans living in Forest Grove. Lastly, it should be noted that these newest signs were fittingly put up immediately prior to Memorial Day. Again, thank you, Forest Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Mr. Dale Feek.
Mayor Wenzel, councilors, Chair, Mariana Manzuela, say it again.
Valenzuela.
Valenzuela, thank you. And councillors, Dale Feek. Where do I live? 3363 Levina Drive, just about said my first address, 2926 Forest Hill Drive. Anyway, 3363 Levina Drive, Forest Grove. May I have three minutes?
You may have.
Thank you very much. To top. June 14. Just had a presentation, proclamation. It's important. We're also gonna have protests on June 14 in Beaverton, hopefully in Forest Grove, too. No King Day. President Trump is acting like a king, tyrant. I've given most of you the book on tyranny, Twenty Lessons, Actions to Take to Stop a Tyrant. We need to stop the tyranny that's happening currently in our U.S. government. I appreciate you, Councilor Gustafson, standing out, stand out, being at the protests above the flag in Forest Grove. We need all the people standing up, working to prevent tyranny in the United States. And it's also President Trump's birthday, June 14, and he's having tanks, gonna tear up some of the streets with his tanks and his ceremony. So anyway, please, all of you, fight for our democracy. All right, that's number one. And number two is Crane Information. I rushed over here because Crane Data Center had an informational meeting at Pacific University at Wyshburn Hall in the, in the multipurpose room. Very few people showed up. It was a small group, a lot of Dame Crane people were there. The press was there a little bit, and it was informative. And, you know, we do have Crane Data Center, you as councillors, I appealed to you and lost overwhelmingly. Appealed to the planning commission, lost there, came here, lost. And so data centers are okay, they provide a function, but also they have to be controlled. As I said tonight, at the meeting, you know, some kids are really addicted to the phones, and they have major mental emotional problems, and big CEO people won't even let their kids use phones. And there are now people, school districts, that are saying we need to lock the phones up because it's creating too much emotional stress for the kids. That needs to be addressed, as well as the positive things that can happen in the way of getting fiber optic in Forest Grove, having quicker access to data. Ninety-five percent of the data centers don't operate, they don't do anything, they just wait, 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 use energy in water or air. So data centers are necessary, unless we're ready to give up everything, but we really, you as councillors, need to address what you said before. Take a look at the codes in Forest Grove and how to address so that we get maybe no more data centers, or at least more controlled data centers. Mayor Wenzel, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Carol Allen.
I agree on the data center. I just wanted to say to you that I've been sharing things with you, and the reason I'm doing this is because I think it's important that you understand what people's lives are and how important those lives are and what brings success and what doesn't. And one of the things is I have learned in my life, as I have walked, is if I don't learn to forgive and forgive myself as much as others, I'm gonna be, I'm not gonna be very productive as a human being because I'm gonna be working out of a wounded area of my life, and I had to learn that. I had to stop and take time and start looking at my life and saying, it's not your problem. It's not you who is causing me a problem. I'm gonna pick any part of this back. See, I don't know you, but you're not my problem. My problem is why am I reacting to you? What is in me? And one of the things the Lord has taught me is a lot of times there's places of unforgiveness that I need to deal with. It tells us in Matthew 6:15, "If you do not forgive others, they're trespassing; neither will your father forgive you your trespass." And I think this is a very important thing because I had a very harsh father, and I had to forgive him, and it took me a bit of time, but in doing that, it set me so free that in the end, I was able to lead my father. And that was a miracle, three weeks before he passed of an unusual, something that we had no idea was. So that is the miracle that unforgive, I mean forgiveness gives, and I want to.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Hey, are there any, are there any people on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Oh, I just, it's not just staff, but I don't see any community members on Zoom. So anyone else in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to sign up, wishing to give public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to Item D, additions or deletions. I'm skipping Item C because there's nothing on the consent agenda, in case you're wondering how I went from B to D. City manager, any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any proposed by city councillors? Seeing none. Next up is Item E, presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. And we have a presentation by Ride Connection, and we have some representatives of Ride Connection that are gonna come up and share with the council.
Good evening, Mayor Wenzel, Chair Valenzuela, councillors, I'm Andy Nelson, CEO of Ride Connection, and I'm excited to be here tonight as we talk about some of the exciting work we've been doing in the community around Community Connector services, services, and also some shuttle bus enhancements, but I first wanted to give my colleagues a chance to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Mayor Wenzel, Chair Valenzuela, and councillors for having us this evening. My name is John Mira. I am the Service Planning Supervisor with Ride Connection.
Good evening, Mayor Wenzel, Chair Valenzuela, City Council. My name is Reza Farhidi. I'm a transportation planner with Washington County, and we're closely with Ride Connection on some of their initiatives.
We have a brief presentation planned for you tonight, brief, and some time for questions and answers. We just wanted to provide an overview of the Ride Connection/Washington County partnership and the transit planning and coordination that's underway. In addition, want to highlight Grove Link and the other Community Connector services, give you an update on what's happening there, and some shuttle stop enhancements as well. If you don't know Ride Connection, we're a private nonprofit transit provider in the Portland metro area, and we contract and partner with Washington County as a public transportation service provider. In that role, we're able to really leverage a private, local, federal. Next slide would be great. Really, in our role, we are able to leverage other resources for your community, private, local, federal, and state, as well as our community partnerships, which includes engagement with organizations like Central Cultural and others, so wanted to just make sure we touched down a bit on who we are as Ride Connection. So let's get into some of the updates. I'm handing it to you, John.
Thank you, Andy, and next slide, please. Great, thank you. I want to give a little overview of Ride Connection, all the work we do in Washington County. We were here about a year ago, showed this same map, and since then, our coverage in Washington County has really expanded and transformed. That's been really good news. Ride Connection with our Community Connector program, we have a primary goal of connecting areas that are uncircled by transit, underserved by transit, otherwise hard to get around if you are transit-dependent or commuting in without your personal vehicle, and connecting those areas with the wider TriMet transit system. Each of these services is unique. We have Grove Link, Cornelius Link, and West Link, all meeting in Forest Grove. These serve both to circulate within the communities, areas that TriMet doesn't serve, provide needed connections out into the rural area, and then help people get into the TriMet system to commute into the urban area for work. Since last summer, we've expanded into the North Bethany, Cedar Mill area with Bethany Link. We've provided needed connections with our King City link into, from King City to Tygerd, Durham, and Tobalatin. And we're always looking at new ways that we can better serve the community with our system. We also provide a number of other programs in Washington County, door-to-door dial-a-ride type services, much of it utilizing volunteers, but also our partners like Central Cultural and many of our staff drivers as well. We provide shared vehicles to other nonprofits in need of an accessible vehicle that they can use after hours or on weekends or whenever we're not using it, and we also offer mileage reimbursement to people who are transporting their friends, neighbors, family members who are older adults, people with disabilities, and need help getting moving through the community. Next slide, please. I wanted to share a few more specifics on those service expansions we were able to bring to the community last summer. Starting with Grove Link, we made some minor route modifications, changed some of the time points in the schedule, really to make the system operate more smoothly, more efficiently, better meet the community need. We also agreed with TriMet to share a few more TriMet Line 57 bus stops, providing better transfers to TriMet, but also providing us with accessible stop locations to bring people to in the community. And we added new stops at Rogers Park, Lincoln Park, Cedar and Pacific, and Brook and David Hill Road. Next slide, please. Next, we were able to expand the frequency of our West Link bus service that connects Forest Grove to Banks, North Plains, and then back into Hillsborough. We added new early morning trips, primarily for people doing that reverse commute, trying to get from the Max in Hillsborough to the rural area, but then also offered some time points in the midday when we had some gaps in service. We're now up to six weekday round trips. It's a small but mighty service. And we also modified the route to better serve and provide connections in Forest Grove and in Hillsborough. So you'll notice a new downtown stop, as well as other new stops in the community. All these services meet at the Safeway Bus Stop. It's become kind of the hub for our system. And over in Hillsborough, we provided a new stop at Glencoe High School where there wasn't previously a West Link stop. Next slide, please. And lastly, Cornelius Link. We started this in winter of 2021, really as a weekend-only pilot, to better connect Forest Grove to Cornelius and provide that community circulator within Cornelius. We always knew that if it was successful on weekends, we would need to serve weekdays as well. And sorry, that's just Saturdays, not Sundays. So we, we were able to secure funding through our partnership with Washington County to bring it now six days a week, also modifying the route to serve more community destinations like Forest Hills Mobile Estates, Central Cultural, the cinemas, Southeast Cornelius, and then we added some new AM and PM employment trips as well, getting people from Line 57 to some of the industrial employment in the area. And next slide, I'm going to hand it over to Reza to talk about the specifics of our bus stop enhancements project.
Thanks, John. You may recall, for those of you here a year ago, I provided an update on this project. So with partnership with Ride Connection, we applied for a statewide transportation improvement fund, or STIF discretionary grant. And the purpose of this project is to enhance the customer experience and improve community awareness of Ride Connection Shuttle Services, not just in Forest Grove but across the county, and as you saw on the map a few slides ago. So as part of this project, the county, we're installing signs, landing pads, shelters with benches and lighting where needed, and we have an agreement with the cities for them to take on the maintenance of those improvements for their given lifespan. Except for the signs, the county would maintain the signs, and John can speak more about the unique situation that we have in Forest Grove with regards to maintenance in a few slides. Our grant was originally supposed to expire by end of June, so we were supposed to be done by now. Unfortunately, we had some unforeseen delays, so we did get an extension from ODOT to complete the project by the end of this year. And as we speak, our board is actually authorizing our construction contract to move forward. So we're really excited to finally get this work underway. Next slide. So the issue in Forest Grove, Grove Link shelters were installed in 2016, 17 timeframe, and they're now close to the end of their useful life. There have been issues with maintenance. Because they're made of glass, they've been prone to vandalism, and repairs have been costly. So what we're doing is we're gonna be replacing those shelters with something that's more hardy, polycarbonate materials, so they'll be scratch and shatter resistant, so they should be hopefully better able to stand up to vandalism or other, other issues. We're also gonna be building or expanding landing pads where we felt was most necessary in order to increase accessibility for those in wheelchairs and other mobility devices. And we're also gonna be installing new signage and schedule information. Right now, Ride Connection signage is pretty inconspicuous, and so what we want to do is create a unified brand across Ride Connection Shuttle Services with big conspicuous signage, so folks are aware where the services stop. They'll be two-sided so that no matter what direction you're walking in, you'll be able to see the sign, and then we'll have schedule information posted on the poll as well, so folks can either look at the timetable, or they could, I think there's a QR code, there will be QR code on the schedule, so they'll be able to go on Ride Connection's website and look at the schedule there. During the project, we'll be. During the project, we'll be closing the sidewalk temporarily at those landing pad locations. So those in particular are by the Safeway stop on Pacific Avenue, and then also at the Main and University stops near Pacific University. Those will be closed for a few days at a time while we install the upgraded landing pads. Next slide. So I want to highlight a partnership between the county, Ride Connection, and the city in terms of determining a place for a new City Hall stop. This is for our West Link, or Ride Connection's West Link service. We were really trying to find a place that the West Link could stop in downtown, where it's most visible to the residents and visitors of Forest Grove, someplace that's accessible for people to be able to get on and off the bus. And thanks to the work, we worked closely with Jesse to find a location on Council Street in front of City Hall to be able to install this location. So we're really excited about this new stop that's going to be opening with all the other stop improvements later this fall. Next slide. Now I'll pass it over to John to wrap us up.
I'll end with a few near-term priorities for the system, one we might be focusing on in the next two or so years. And the first of those really is sustaining our existing service levels. We put a lot of new service on the road last year, especially out here in Western Washington County. And we want to keep that on the road. If funding remains flat or increases slightly, that's going to be our biggest priority. The cost of operating public transportation has grown so significantly, and I think outpaced inflation more widely. And so that in itself is a challenge, but we think it is something that we can securely do over the next couple of years. And of course, as TriMet changes its system, as other transportation providers change their system, we'll always be in a place where we want to flexibly react to that and coordinate with other public transportation providers so that we're better feeding people into the system, better allowing people to connect within their communities. So you might see minor changes to our routes based on that, or any number of needed changes. We're also going to be focusing on wrapping up Phase Two of the bus stop improvements project. And I think a lot of those Forest Grove bus stops are included in that batch of Phase Two stops. And then we'll be moving on to Phase Three. Phase Three will focus more on the new service areas elsewhere in Washington County, especially that Bethany link and King City link system. Here in Forest Grove, though, we need to now move forward with TriMet towards a maintenance agreement to maintain these stops. They're often out here maintaining their Line 57 stops. We're hoping to leverage that work that TriMet does through a maintenance agreement to make sure that the new stop enhancements going in in Forest Grove are well-maintained and taken care of. And we'll be back, I believe, in 2026, county-leading, updating their transit development plan. This will be really where the county, with Ride Connection support, lays out the funding priorities for the biennium after that, the FY 28-29 biennium, and really putting on paper what the priority service improvements are, more in that midterm space. You may have seen in the news, but paying attention to the legislative session, there is a proposal to increase the transit tax if a package successfully is passed this summer. If that were to happen, and we saw new funding come in, we would evaluate a number of, I think, transit gaps throughout the system in Washington County. I think out here, we can't commit to anything in the Forest Grove, Cornelius rural area, but we know that there's temporal gaps in the system, like on weekends, for instance. So if there's enough funding, enough community support, that could be a need we can address. But again, we haven't committed to anything in our plan for those dollars. And we'll approach that over the next couple of years. And next slide, just going to wrap up with our thank you slide. Thank you so much again, and we're happy to take any questions from the City Council.
Great, thank you. Council President Valenzuela.
Thank you. Yes, you were here a few months ago, and we were very excited because it looks very promising. And now I see all the things that you have accomplished, and it's really great. My question is, are there more youth using the services? Do you have numbers like data that reflects, you know, the groups, age groups, that are using your services more?
I don't have super granular data on that yet. We're doing our annual onboarding, onboard rider survey starting this week.
Okay.
We'll be out in Cornelius pretty soon, out in Forest Grove, I think, next week. So that will tell us a lot about the demographic makeup of ridership. We do know anecdotally that there were a lot of high school-age students living in Cornelius that needed to get to Forest Grove High School.
Yes.
And that those students have begun using the system. We don't know how great of numbers yet, but I'm really looking forward to seeing that. And I sure do hope that we're better serving youth now.
That is wonderful, wonderful news. Thank you. Counselor Shemel.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I haven't heard reports of any injuries, so I'm grateful that you are doing this proactively before there's injuries, particularly where you know items are past their useful date. So I'm grateful for that, and also grateful for the deliberate intersections between your agencies, in terms of the various projects. And I'm sure you're working with our city department around projects we have, just to making sure all of the stations or stops are compatible with the equipment that is interfacing with them. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
I have a couple of questions. I'm interested, I'm sure you've heard, like, the TV Highway Steering Committee and the rapid bus transit. I'm just wondering, are you guys part of that TAC team? Are you working with Metro and TriMet at all, like, on a level of, you know, one of the proposed local preferred adoption is to, you know, maybe get rid of, well, is to get rid of stops in Forest Grove. And so I'm just wondering if there's ability or capacity for Grove Link to take over those stops so our community members can still access the stops we have now. I'm just wondering if you are in talks with any, like, Metro or TriMet on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wenzel. Ride Connection is not on the TAC. I'm not sure if Washington County is, or what capacity. I'm sorry, I can speak from Ride Connection. We have a good working relationship with TriMet Service Planning and Service Delivery. And it's not an unfamiliar situation for us to be in, where TriMet makes significant change. And we're in a position to fill the service gaps that emerge from that. So we haven't reached that, I think, level of coordination on the topic with TriMet yet. But I think there will be opportunity in the future, in a few years, when it does come to them, possibly moving or removing certain bus stops. And can't commit to anything, but that's what we're here to do. We're here to fill service gaps.
Great, I just want to plant the seed, because I know that a lot of our community members locally use our stops. Like, it's not just to get out. People think, like, oh, people take the bus to get to Max, to get to the airport, or to get to a Blazer game. And, you know, I don't have statistics proving it, but I also think that a lot of our community members that I speak to use it to get to Safeway or to go pick up their prescription at, you know, Walmart, or whatever it is. And I think, too, you know, it's, I'm real excited about the expansion into Cornelius and Grove Link because it makes our infrastructure stronger, and it makes our community stronger. You use the students, but I mean, there is just this interface between our communities, where one community has certain services that, so to be able to go back and forth, I think, is just amazing. And so that was my, just my last question is, do you have marketing materials at, like, hotels and different places? Because I feel like with local events, with, where people could be at a hotel and leave their cars, and even if they just wanted to go see a movie at Regal, because, you know, they can have a beer and watch a movie, or make minimums, or they go to concourse, or they go to the market. I just think that, you know, it's another opportunity for people, for not just our local community members, but for our overnight stays to come in and be like, oh, my God, there's this great service. And it's, you know, safe and accessible, and we get to mix with the community that lives there. I think would be really cool. So those are my comments, and I just want to say thank you and keep up, keep doing the great work. We really appreciate it. Okay, awesome, thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on to Item F, which is Public Hearings, Ordinances, and Resolutions. So wait, I better switch the script. The City Council will now continue the public hearing opened on May 12, 2025, concerning ordinance number 2025-02. Staff will now brief the council on any new information received since the last meeting. Hello.
Thank you, mayors, councilmen, thank you, mayor, councilmembers. Brian Polk, Community Development Director, no additional conversation or no additional correspondence has been received since the first year.
Any, does council have any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the proposal? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comments? City Recorder, is there anyone on Zoom, or anyone via Zoom, who would like to comment on the proposal? If so, please use the raise hand option. Please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, but I see none. There's no testimony, so. If there are no further questions, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the council to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-02?
I move to approve ordinance 2025-02.
I'll second.
The motion, or the ordinance was moved by Council Gustafson and seconded by Council Falconer. Will the city recorder please read the ordinance by title only for second reading? Wait, I forgot the discussion. Hang on, I missed the part of the script. Is there a second? After saying, do any councillors wish to comment on the motion? Any discussion, comment? Nope. City Manager, please read the ordinance by title only for a second reading.
Ordinance number 2025-02, ordinance amending Forest Grove Development Code Article 8 and 12 to adopt revised floodplain management regulations and definitions in compliance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency 2024 Flood Hazard Management Model Ordinance, file number 311-25-000005-PLNG.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Shemel?
Yes.
Counselor Falconer?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Let the record show, the motion passes and ordinance number 2025-02 is adopted by the City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on. Item F2, Resolution 2025-19, authorizing decreases in health vision and dental benefits and increasing in stipend for the mayor with changes effective July 1 of 2025. And I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager and Finance Director Paul Downey.
Evening, mayor and councilors. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this resolution since it involves a change in your compensation, so that way the public can hear more about what happened in the processes and how it got to where it is now. So, City Council, compensation was raised during the budget process during 2024, and the Budget Committee reached a consensus for the resident members of the Budget Committee review council compensation and make recommendations to the City Council. The residents, the resident members of the Budget Committee met in April and May of 2024 and conducted a thorough analysis of existing compensation in comparison to 16 other local municipalities. And this committee found that the current compensation structure lacks transparency. As the public is aware, unaware of the individual health insurance elections each council receives and the associated expense heavily weighted towards health insurance, which primarily benefits retired or self-employed individuals, does not always align with the duties and responsibilities of the physician, with potential large discrepancies in compensation resulting from insurance benefits, needs to align more closely with the city values of financial stewardship, equity, and inclusion. This committee's recommendation to the council included retaining the existing stipend differential between the councillor and the mayor, creating a new stipend category for the council president, change health insurance options to councillor only, and retain the 95.5 premium split. That's where the city pays 95% of the insurance premium. Allow additional insurance at the mayor and councillors' own, councillors' own expense. Increase the wage stipend for the mayor to $12,000 annually. Increase the wage stipend for the council president to $9,500 annually, and increase the wage stipend to councillors to $8,000 annually. No change to the electronic stipend, where councillors allow a new electronic device, $850 for a new electronic device every three years, and review compensation every three years commensurate with the nonrepresented employee salary survey. Committee found that adopting these recommendations would reduce total compensation for City Council by $16,000 per year, from approximately $146,000 to $130,000. Be more transparent and equitable to residents and councillors. His health insurance compensation would be at the same level. Allow flexibility for mayor and councillors to maintain family or other coverage by offering, offering the mayor or the councillors the ability to pay for the additional qualified individuals at their own expense. Enhance accessibility by enabling individuals to run for office who may not be otherwise able to do so. Align more closely with city values of financial stewardship, equity, and inclusion. The council held work sessions in May and June of 2024 to consider the committee's recommendation and to hear from the chair of the committee. In March 2025, the council approved Objective 11 to evaluate council compensation and accessibility to help inform the budget process. In response, the council held a work session on April 14, 2025, and reached a consensus to adopt the committee's recommendations specifically. Effective July 1, 25, offer councillor-only health, dental, and vision coverage with an option to purchase additional insurance at the mayor or councillors' own expense. Effective July 1, 2025, increase the monthly stipend for the mayor to $1,000 a month, or $12,000 per year, for the council president, $792 a month, or $9,500 a year, and for councillors, to $667 a month, or $8,000 per year. Require residents, resident members of the Budget Committee to review council compensation every three years and make a recommendation to the council, and make no changes to the electronic stipend. Be sure compliance with ORS Oregon Vice Statute 244. Implementation of these changes requires the passage of three resolutions. ORS 244 is, is the conflict of interest for like officials. A resolution for the mayor, with the mayor abstaining. A resolution for the three councillors elected in November 2022, with all three of these councillors abstaining. And a resolution for the three councillors elected in November 2024, with all three of these councillors abstaining. The resolutions have been organized in this manner. As the mayor and his councillor have to declare a direct conflict of interest due to potential financial gain or the avoidance of financial detriment, they must recuse themselves for the resolution involving themselves and not participate in that resolution. If a councillor or the mayor wishes to leave the dais at that, for their resolution, that is up to them. Council President Valenzuela will preside over the resolution for changing the mayor's compensation. And according to City Charter Sections 12 and 13, and Council Rule 2.2.2 and 2.2.3, majority of councillors must be present to constitute a quorum, and the express approval of a majority of, the majority of the quorum is necessary for any council decision, except when the charter requires approval by a majority of the council. This resolve, these resolutions only may be passed by a majority of quorum. And we talked about the fiscal impact, where this will save the city about $16,000 per year. Staff considers, the staff recommends the council consider the attached resolutions changing the mayor and the councillors' compensation insurance. So ask if there's any questions at this time.
Yes, does the council have any questions for staff?
I would like to step off, recuse myself, and step off the dais.
Okay.
Okay, is there no questions? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-19?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-19.
Second.
So it was moved, the resolution was moved by Council Gustafson and seconded by Councilor Shemel. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mr. City Manager, please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution number 2025-19, Resolution authorizing de-
Resolution number twenty twenty five dash one nine, resolution authorizing decreases in health, vision, and dental benefits and increases in stipend for the mayor with changes effective July first, two thousand twenty five.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Eh, city recorder, please call the roll?
Councillor Falconer?
Yes.
Councillor Martinez?
Yes.
Councillor Marshall?
Yes.
Councillor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councillor Schimmel?
Yes.
So the vote is eh six to zero. Resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen is adopted.
We are going to move on to resolution two zero two five dash two zero, authorizing decreases in health, vision, and dental benefits and increases in stipend for councillors elected in November two thousand twenty two with changes effective July first. Any questions for staff or? Do we need to recuse?
Declare the conflict.
Yeah, declare the conflict from the people or? And then either remove or sit. So if you're elected in two thousand twenty two, you may not discuss on this or vote on it. So you need to declare publicly a conflict and then you can decide if you stay on the dais or leave. So we'll go with Councillor Marshall.
I have to state that it's a conflict of?
Yeah.
Okay, I will not be voting because it's a conflict.
Okay.
I also will not be voting because of conflict. I will not be voting because of conflict.
Are there any questions or discussion, or questions for staff? What is the wish of the remaining councillors?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash two zero.
Second.
Okay, resolution two zero two five dash two zero was moved by Councillor Gustafson and seconded by Councillor Falconer. Is there any discussion? I want to do a little discussion about the whole process. I want to thank the Budget Committee members who looked at this process. They spent, Paul, how many hours? Like, there was three different subcommittee meetings.
They probably spent about seven, seven to eight hours on this.
Yeah, and they, they looked at comparable cities and they also looked through the lens of our goals and objectives for financial stewardship and responsibility, equity. And then also, I want to state that there was people, I think, that were volunteers on the Budget Committee and who are part of the charter, who also recognize the fact that sometimes we don't have the amount of people participating in, in, you know, government. And so we couldn't do districts and term limits. And so like that need to really try to, you know, we talked about that earlier with the work session with the civics academy. And then policy like this will hopefully encourage people like who maybe can't serve because they have childcare issues or, you know, or like have to pay for something or whatever the case may be. But hopefully this is a way to um create the opportunity for people who want to participate to participate. So I'll get off my soapbox and that's just my little discussion point. Um, okay, will the same manager read it by title only?
Resolution author, resolution number twenty twenty five dash two zero, resolution authorizing decreases in health, vision, and dental benefits and increases in stipend for councillors elected in November two thousand twenty two with changes effective July first, two thousand twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Councillor Gustafson?
Yes.
Councillor Schimmel?
Yes.
Councillor Falconer?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two five dash zero two is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of four to zero. We are now moving on to resolution two zero two five dash two one, authorizing decreases in health, vision, and dental benefits and increases in stipends for councillors elected in November of two thousand twenty four with changes effective July first. Were there any, oh, yes, go ahead.
I am recusing due to a conflict.
Thank you.
I'll also declare a conflict and I'll step down.
I declare a conflict of interest and I'll step down.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing, we're seeing none, is there a motion? Is there a motion for this?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution two zero two five dash two one was moved by Council President Valenzuela, seconded by Councillor Marshall. Will this, is there any discussion? I'm going to repeat what I said last time, I'm not going to repeat it, but same sentiments. Any other discussion? Okay, will the city recorder please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty one, resolution authorizing decreases in health, vision, and dental benefits and increases in stipend for councillors elected in November two thousand twenty four with changes effective July first, two thousand twenty five.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councillor Martinez?
Yes.
Councillor Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two five dash two one is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Paul. I'm going to call up Police Chief Henry Ryan, Ryman for our resolution two zero two five two two, approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the Forest Grove School District and the City of Forest Grove for a school resource officer, SRO, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Oh, good evening, mayor, council members. Uh, this evening, we're requesting council to approve our resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two, which allows the police department to continue with the school resource officer program through an IGA with the Hills, excuse me, with the Forest Grove School District. The current IGA expired on, on May first. The Forest Grove School Board passed their resolution to extend the current IGA for one year on May nineteenth. With the exception to the school district's financial obligation, all other terms and conditions of the IGA remain the same. The IGA stipulates that the school district will cover fifty percent of the school resource officer's salary for the school year, which is approximately nine months, and this equates to sixty one thousand one hundred and forty six dollars for the twenty five, twenty six school calendar year. Our cost is included in the twenty five, twenty seven by he own budget. Staff recommends city council consider and approve the attached resolution. Any question? Yes, mayor?
Oh, sorry, no, here's my hand. Um, no. Uh, does, when we choose our SRO, are they, do they have like a three-year contract or every year? It says like, do we?
We're currently on a one-year contract. Our goal was hopefully to add a second SRO. The school district didn't have within our budget, but we did look at perhaps applying with the school district for a cops grant that would allow for a school resource officer position. But unfortunately, under the new administration, there is some new contract language which allows cooperation to certain federal agencies which, which violate Oregon state. Doctor Weston, I proceed moving forward with applying for that.
And so basically, so every year we have this process. But then the other part of that, though, is that the officer who chooses to do it doesn't know if that's going to be their job the following year until we vote, until the school board.
Hopefully, if we don't find dollars in the next budget, the school district will go back with for your.
Yeah.
Which correlates the assignment of the.
Yeah, I think that's really important just for, I mean, because you're learning two systems, right? You're learning, like, they come in knowing the city system and the email and the police, but the school district system is completely different, right? And so they're expected to know this and it's a lot of work and a lot of moving parts to just have a one year. I just don't think it's fair to the officer. That's just my two cents. Any other questions? Councillor Schimmel?
Uh, well, this is, it's new to me as a new councillor. I'm, I'm curious if, if you can speak on the, the interactions this our SRO typically has with your department, uh, what, what you've learned, say, the last few years and any concerns in the year ahead?
Well, there, there are no concerns on our end with the exception of hopefully we'll get a second SRO. Was the call load is pretty steep in, uh, the twenty two school year calendar. Uh, the district moved away from having an SRO program based on the national narrative. And, uh, during that year, we did a lot of analysis and we responded to five hundred and sixty six calls at the schools. Needless to say, the school district found that they were getting twenty two different officers responding to various types of calls for service. So, uh, unfortunately, a heavy lift is responding to calls, uh, at the different schools. But the other part of that is doing educational pieces, being in the classroom, you know, mingling and building relationships with the students.
Yeah, I can, I can speak that Officer McBee like presents in my class and he's done it ever since he got hired. It's, it's the kids, the students love it because it's someone new and he gives real life experiences and stories. So I think it's a great asset.
So Officer Sam Yance will be the new school resource officer. Officer McBee stepped down, uh, from his assignment.
Wow, you'll have to give me that. Okay. Heartbreak. Okay, any other questions? What's the wish of the council?
I move that we pass resolution two zero two five dash two two.
A second. Thank you. It was moved by Councillor Schimmel and seconded by Councillor Martinez. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the city manager please read it by title only?
Resolution number two zero two five dash two two, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Forest Grove School District and the City of Forest Grove for a school resource officer and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Uh, I think it has to do with money, so let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Martinez?
Yes.
Councillor Marshall?
Yes.
Councillor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councillor Schimmel?
Yes.
Councillor Falconer?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two five dash two two is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item G, which is council communications, and we'll start with councillor, Council President Valenzuela.
All right, so. I do not have my notes, but I do remember a couple of things from the library commission meeting, okay? Um, so the book sale was a success, seventy five hundred dollars were raised. So I want to thank the community and all the volunteers for being present, for showing up every time the library has these events because these funds mean a lot. And there are many things that are needed and I, we really appreciate your help and support and your love for the, for the Forest Grove Library. Eh, we had a presentation eh on the last meeting eh, which took place on the fourteenth of this month eh, about the children's area. Eh, the last time I had mentioned to you that eh, there was this big donation, eh, fifty thousand dollars. Um, but it was, is specifically given to eh, to use, to be used for the children's space. So we saw the presentation, the theme is going to be nature, trees and forest. And eh, we saw all the different items that they are looking into purchasing to make this area very beautiful, very lively for our kids. And eh, at the library, if you remember, there, they have the kids' area and then the, the books in Spanish are next to it. So what they're going to do is do like a continuation of this theme eh, to reach all that area where the books in Spanish for kids are. So eh, that was eh, really, really good news. And I believe I had mentioned also eh, but just a reminder that eh, this year eh, the friends are going to be with the reading, eh, the reading eh, contest that they do. Eh, this is going to benefit Adventures Without Limits specifically for Adelante Chicas. So they'll be able to go on nature trips, eh, kayaking and doing all these wonderful things and experiencing, experiencing nature eh, like teenagers should eh, during the summer instead of doing other things. So those are eh, those are my announcement eh, CDBD, we haven't had a meeting. They canceled it last month and eh, there's no update for the next one.
Great, thank you, Council President. Councillor Falconer?
I have nothing since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gustafson?
Um, not much to report on. Uh, the Public Arts Commission is working on their long-term art acquisition plan um, as well as still going through the review of their two thousand twenty five through twenty seven strategic plan.
That's it? Great, thank you. Councillor Marshall?
Um, I was unable to attend the person rec meeting, um, I had prior plans, but they are going to be doing, um, a big council on June twenty third. Probably have another meeting prior.
Great, thank you. Councillor Martinez?
So I met with Maria Caballero Rubio just recently and talked about the Forest Grove Senior Center. And it was a really, we had a really nice visit and discussion. Um, it's going very well at the senior center. Anna is, um, feeling right at home. She feels things are really coming together there. Uh, they will be here June twenty third to do a presentation for the council. Um, they do have a Facebook presence and a newsletter that are going out. So if you need any information for the senior center, please go to those items. Um, I think with the newsletter, you can probably get a hold of, um, well, okay. So I hadn't been to the Facebook page yet and you might be able to sign up for it there. But otherwise, um, call the Forest Grove Senior Community Center to get, um, signed up for a newsletter.
Great, thank you. Councillor Schimmel?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I did want to follow up on the discussion around the CCE. They'll be talking next week about the ATM topic. And I think stemming from our last conversation here, uh, that the FG four were, uh, was, was something we wanted them to take up. But if there was any feedback on it, any specific nature, considering the stage of the program in October, if there's any more prescribed.
I, I think we'll know more after, they're scheduled for, twenty forty is scheduled for a work session in June. I think it's the first. Jesse, help me out. Not on the calendar.
We actually have two things for twenty forty scheduled. I'm confirming this with Sarah tomorrow. We have something on June ninth and then also on June twenty third.
I think we'll know more going into July and then that should be enough time, hopefully.
Uh, and then just in, in light of approving something from a, a board or commission earlier with the, with the Budget Committee, I, I'd, I'd also want to, uh, mention that with the, the EDC, they, they took great pride in being able to contribute in the review of the economic development analysis. That, that, that brought their, their business, uh, economic acumen to the forefront. Uh, but I just want to encourage us in every way possible that, that we are, uh, lever, maximizing the, the talent and professionalism of our boards and commissions. But I think we've, we've had a good, a couple of good examples.
Got it. Thank you, Councillor Schimmel. Jesse, would you like to give your city managers' report?
Sure, just a couple of brief things. Friendly reminder, uh, the third Budget Committee meeting is tomorrow at Light and Power at six o'clock. Um, also, the glow up project in downtown is proceeding with sidewalk and brickwork. Um, we are aware of some of the concerns regarding the outlets, um, and so we're reevaluating that. Um, our Light and Power Director and our Public Works Director have been on site. They're taking a look and they are discussing options for potentially removing some, not, excuse me, moving some of those outlets to an area that is, um, uh, less susceptible to your door hitting it or less susceptible to potentially tripping on it. So we're doing that evaluation now. I think you'll see some changes here in the near future on some of those. Um, uh, and then, uh, the only other thing I would mention is, um, the final vote tally for the police bond will be on June sixteenth. So city staff is still watching that closely and assessing what options there might be depending on the final outcome of what that bond vote is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just have a few things to report on. The Sister City delegation for Forest Grove will be visiting our Sister City News in Japan, July first through the eighth. Um, on Monday, next Monday, June second, Councillor Marshall and myself will be hosting a listening session with the athletic representatives in Forest Grove about, uh, the fee study and cost recovery. Um, I guess I want, let me do my things and then I'm going to ask for the things I want from the council. Uh. On last Thursday, I attended the community event re-treading our social fabric, lessons learned from the genocide in Rwanda. And it was really a great presentation. It was locally done. It was held here. But one of the things they talked about is like built, like building community and showing up for each other. And so one of the things that they did in Rwanda was to have a community service day. And I'm just like going to float that idea that we could like on Forest Grove's birthday, like do a proclamation for community service and then encourage community members to do that. That would be something I would like to see. I don't know if we want to have further discussion on that. I would, I spoke to this at the beginning of the meeting before proclamations. I was extremely moved by the American Legion post to Memorial Day celebration yesterday. I hope I could articulate it well at the podium, but it, it, it's something to carry a tone of seriousness, of memory, and then also of like proud of this is who we are. And then speaking for other people who aren't there to speak. The stories, the shared energy, I, I mean, I don't know. I thought it was just so well done. And I'm, I'm appreciate that, you know, Mr. Thaler invited all of us to attend and that I could go. I'm going to meet with Adelante, with Jesse and Adelante, I think later this month to talk about some federal funding concerns. And then also the Forest Grove Farmers Market. And then the other thing, I guess I would like, the other, you know, the other thing is I would like us, I guess consensus for is I would like to write a letter with your, like on behalf of the council to Bonneville about that pool and about our, that mistip project. Like apply a little bit of political pressure to get that moved so we can continue with funding to fix that intersection at Maple, at Maple 47 in Fern Hill. That's such a scary intersection. That's been, that's one of our most dangerous intersections. It got approved locally. Like the only thing stopping us is that pool from Bonneville and the fact that they're like, they don't feel the urgency like I feel the urgency and I'm just really afraid that the price is going to go up. So I would like to be able to have staff write a letter. We sign it or I sign it on behalf of the city council. But then I would also like to ask our congressional delegation to sign on and support it as well. And so I'm wondering if I see head nods, is that okay? With everybody? And then the other thing I'm wondering is that do we want to bring up a, do we want to have a work session on like, because we're going to probably based on the Oregon Ethics ruling about food, we're going to end up, I mean, I don't want to like spoiler alert before we told, tell our boards and commissions, but we can't have our boarding commission reception in June because of this policy that was released last week as effective immediately. I don't, so I'm just wondering, is there, do we want to have a work session to create a policy? I don't think we'll have a policy before that date. But, you know, do we want to discuss like either making a policy or changing our meeting so they're not around mealtimes or what, do we, do we just want to discuss that, that ruling? Jesse, did you want to say something?
So I know that the municipal city attorneys are discussing a policy that may be applicable to kind of broad-based with a lot of cities. If there's a council consensus, it might be wise to kind of wait till they've had some conversation about what a potential policy could be and what the compensable benefit part of it is and how that may be interpreted. But, and then maybe have a work session after we get that additional information, Mayor.
Yeah, that's.
If the council's okay with that.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would readily agree that every city is going to be looking at potentially passing some kind of policy. And this will definitely warrant a work session. I think it's just kind of when the timing is, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm fine with waiting on that. I just kind of wanted to bring it up because it's not attached to our goals and objectives. But it's also like one of those reactionary things that, and I also want to give a heads up about the boarding. I mean, the impact is too, that we also can't now have our boarding commission reception where we say thank you to our volunteers. So just, just be aware of that email coming out. Okay, I think that's all I have. I'm going to adjourn this, me and the Forest Grove City Council, but stay where you are because we have a work session.
Today, 30.
Yeah, you want to, we'll take a break. Okay.